I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 15, 2014 regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners, and if you wish, you're welcome to stand with us as Commissioner Rick Williams provides the invocation and then leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pray with me, please. Our blessed heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day that you've given us. We ask that you be with us as we conduct the city's business this evening. Give us the wisdom and the guidance that we may do the things that will benefit all the people of this community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Dunning?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here.
Mr. DeFebbe, do we have any awards or recognitions tonight?
I do not, Mayor.
The only thing I have to comment on is today, the new statutes that were passed in the last Kentucky legislative session have come into effect today, and we're no longer a second-class city. The two classes that they have now are first class, of which there are none, and home rule class as of today, so that's over with. Do you have any other comments?
Yes. I have two items. The first is there'll be a need for an executive session. Kate will read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 6 to 1/8/10(c) for discussions of proposed or pending litigation against her on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Second item, with the Commission's courtesy, I'd like to add a late file to purchase 12 new police vehicles. I think the municipal order's on your desk.
It is. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Motion by Dunning, second by Waltrip. Any discussion? To add it to the late agenda? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Now for the approval of minutes for the regular meeting on July 1, 2014.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. We provide time during our regular meetings for public comments. If anybody has an issue they need to bring to the City Commission's attention, we'll provide you that opportunity at this time to step forward to the microphone. Seeing no one, we'll go on to the second reading of Ordinance BG 2014-21.
Ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing 26.24 acres of property located at the intersection of Mount Victor Lane and Old Lover's Lane, with property presently owned by Browning Investors, L.L.P. and O.L. Avery Jr., and said territory being contiguous to existing city limits.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-146.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Bernard S. Shavy to the position of senior trades worker in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbe.
We had an opening in this position. We went out to a public solicitation. We had nine applicants from that process. Bernard Shavy, who's here tonight, was deemed to be the best qualified for the position. It's important to note that this position requires the skills of a master electrician, thus narrowing the pool, and we're pleased to have Mr. Shavy join our organization.
And Mr. Shavy is here with us tonight. Would you mind standing? We'll get the camera on you so people know who the next employee is. Congratulations. Look forward to it. Thank you so much. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you very much. Municipal order 2014-147.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the purchase of pulsar chlorine briquettes from Spear Corporation of Rochdale, Indiana, for fiscal year 2015, in the total amount of $59,628 for the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebbe.
To provide safety to the public for those who use our various swimming pools, we use what is known as a pulsar chlorinator. TruDeFormant uses its own proprietary brisketts, so we're here tonight to ask the Commission to sole source this and go with the proper brisketts needed for both the Circus Square Fountain as well as the water park. I believe Brent is here, if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-148.
Municipal order approving recommendation from the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau to distribute $150,000 of transient room taxes to the Friends of Lost River Incorporated.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill. Mr. DeFebbe.
The hotel next to the convention center, we have an arrangement whereby the transient room tax on that particular facility goes straight to the Visitors Bureau and is used there to distribute grants to those entities in our community that are going to foment further tourism. We're here tonight to hear a brief presentation from Vicki Fitch and her friends concerning the expansion of Lost River Cave.
Welcome, Ms. Fitch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. DeFebbe. Glad to be here tonight. We have Roe Lansden, the Executive Director of Lost River Cave, along with several of her board members and several of her staff with us, in case there are any questions that I can't answer that you may have. We come before you to ask for a lease of these funds so that we can, so they can build a meeting space at their new property at 801 Cave Mill Road that will also encompass a nature discovery center. I believe you all have received quite a bit of paperwork on that. Any questions we can answer for you all?
Any comments or questions? We'll give you an opportunity to do a 60-second commercial, Roe, if you want to. Can you do it in 60 seconds?
Mr. Preseid, you couldn't do it.
I'll try. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners and Mr. DeFebbe. I'd like to thank Vicki Fitch and the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau for their support throughout the years, for all that they do to bring visitors to our community. They are a very, very important link and right arm to every tourist attraction here in Bowling Green. We love to have visitors coming here from out of town and out of state and out of the country. Our visitors are a big help with the tax base here in our community. They leave dollars in the community and before returning to their own home communities, but very often, our staff will meet people who are interested in relocating to the Sunbelt area. We've had vice presidents of corporations come back and tell us that they are looking for new locations for new businesses and wanted to know more about what goes on in the city of Bowling Green. And so, the things that we're doing at Lost River Cave are quality of life issues for all of us, but for so many of our visitors, it helps to make a good impression about the quality of life that we enjoy here and that they might also find in an adopted home in the city of Bowling Green. And so, the new meeting space is a part of that. We are extending the meeting space, but also during the daytime when we don't have visitors renting the meeting space, we will use it as a classroom. We have a great classroom space now, but this will add another 1,200 square feet of classroom slash meeting space so that we can reintroduce our children, parents, to the joy of being outdoors. And the Nature Discovery Center at Lost River Cave, which will come online in the next couple of years, is a big, big part of what we're doing at Lost River Cave.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that you've done, all of you on the board. It's a real showplace. I guess it's a better...
Thank you for the time that you took to come out and take a look at what we're doing. And also, Commissioner Williams, I appreciate that time and invite each and every one of you to join me on a golf cart tour as soon as you can.
Yeah, I'll have to thank you for that, too, and admit that I was pleasantly surprised at what I did not know about Lost River Cave, and I would encourage all the citizens to go out there and have a look.
I think...
Because it is more than what you just, you think it is. That back section in there, there's some beautiful places in the woods. You should go see it.
We have a very talented professional staff who are developing nature programs as fast as they can write them. We have, you know, we can develop programs to any educator's needs, and we do it on a regular basis. So, we're really interested in getting our city schools in touch with the programs that we have available at Lost River Cave, the science programs.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, if your staff could stand as well as your board members so our citizens could see them and we could thank them?
I would love that opportunity. Would you all mind standing?
Okay, for all.
And Roe, don't you have something this Saturday night?
We do. It's a fundraiser, but it's also an opportunity for us to introduce our first professional video, and it's all about the children and nature movement that Lost River Cave is bringing to Bowling Green. And so, I hope that everyone will take an opportunity to come out and support us as we introduce the video at the fundraiser, and have a great time at the cave. There's no better place to party than Lost River Cave's historic cavern nightclub. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any further comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And please feel free, if y'all want to slip on out, you don't have to sit through the rest of the meeting.
Mr. Coats has been through several of them, I don't believe.
We need to see another one. Municipal order 2014-149.
Municipal order approving and ratifying the submission of an application for Homeland Security grant funds related to the first responder equipment project for the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the purchase of in-car cameras for the police department in the amount of $165,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Mr. DeFebbe.
There was a recent deadline of July 3, I believe, for the city to apply for Homeland Security grants under the first responder equipment program. Given the timing of the meeting and some needs, we had to prepare a more suitable application. We went ahead, under my authority, and applied for it. I'm here asking you to back me up to allow us to apply for free money to purchase 30 new in-car cameras. Doug is here, if you have any questions.
No local matches, I understand.
No local match.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-150.
Municipal order authorizing agreements between the city of Bowling Green and each of the four approved subrecipients for Year 11 Community Development Block Grant Program Funding.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbe.
Over the last number of months, we've gone through a series of presentations, all of which were preamble to us receiving our Year 11 funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. We're here tonight to say we got the money, and we would like to start distributing to the four agencies who are subrecipients. That would be the Welfare Center, Human Rights Housing Authority, and Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Brent's here, if you'd like to hear any more about the process or the application.
Any questions or comments? Please call the roll. I'm sorry.
Is this the one where we had citizens help decide how these?
We did.
I'd like to thank those citizens who served on that committee.
And I left my sheet downstairs with the names on them. But we had five citizens. Can you help me remember who they are? This was the first year for them, so I don't know all the names. Okay. We sent them a thank you note. Thank you. All right. Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-151.
Municipal order waiving provisions of Chapter 6 Building Regulations, Subchapter 6-8 Building Permit Fees of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances, related to the waiver of up to $500 of building permit fees for Easton Place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, and second by Hill. Mr. DeFebbe.
Hans is interested in building 32 new units for elderly housing to make that reasonable and affordable. They're looking to achieve a grant through the Home Loan, Federal Home Loan Association. In order to do so, it approves their application if they can get other people's money as a match. They're asking us to provide through contribution of, or free donation of $500 to help them improve their application. Brent, interesting enough, Brent has the authority to do this for single-family homes, but not for rental property, so we're asking here tonight to honor Hans' request and donate the $500. As a waiver of the fees that we would charge for the project.
Any comments or questions? You're going to abstain. Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
I'll have to abstain as my wife is Executive Director.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-152.
Municipal order approving Curriacus Park Improvements Agreement between the city of Bowling Green and Bowling Green East Little League.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Mr. DeFebbe.
One of the partners we have in our community for recreation is the Bowling Green East Little League Association. We're here tonight to approve another partnership. I think it would be helpful and instructive if Brent Belcher would get up and give an overview of their partnership tonight before you.
Mr. Belcher.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe. Mayor and City Commissioners, just want to go over, I guess briefly, the three donations or the three parts of the donation East Little League is looking to do for improvements at Curriacus Park. The first of those would be a sign constructed near the current concession stand of the Little League ball fields. There's two ball fields there at Curriacus Field at Park. The sign would be four foot by seven foot and would cost approximately $2,200. Our staff has mapped utility lines and would be, has already targeted. The location, we feel the best location for that sign, near the concession stand. The second part of their contribution, or donation if you will, would be on the front baseball fields, which we call the minor field, would be expanding or enhancing the bullpens on that field. Third base side would, keeping it a one-lane bullpen, but enhancing it a little bit closer to the greenways path, so they'd move it closer to the dugout, put a thicker gauge of fence on it to make it more susceptible to wear and tear. Then on the first base side, it would be going from a one-lane or a one-alley bullpen to a two-alley bullpen, same gauge of fence, just allow two people to throw at the same time. And then, once again, would be moved closer to the dugout. And then, the third and final part of the contribution would be, in 2009, East Little League provided right at $26,000 to, for Parks and Rec to actually build the batting cages there. And this would be coming back now. Since that time, they would be providing another $5,000 plus for a light for the East Little League and the public to use at the batting cages, or obviously after sunset. It would be a single pole light with one light on it.
Any questions for Mr. Belcher? Yes, sir.
Brent, just a couple of questions. I think all of us appreciate what is taking place here by the individuals for the East Little League. Question number one. I know that the East Little League has used this facility for years, I guess. All of their home games are played there. When does the season normally start and when does the season end for the East Little League? Normally, I'm, you know, I realize there are tournaments afterwards and all that.
Right. It tends to be, Little League season tends to be beginning around April and ends in June, and then that's when their tournaments start, is in the middle of June, per se. Right now is tournament season for Little Leagues. So they're in the, this is the peak season for Little League tournaments right now.
April to June?
June is the end of their regular season, and then they go right into tournament play. Tends to be right around that time.
After June, season end. What takes place at that park, on those grounds?
After June, that's when their tournament teams begin practicing, getting ready for their tournaments.
Well, I guess my question is, maybe I didn't word it very well. When is East Little League not on that field?
As the season goes on, in July, you're talking about less children on the fields, and then obviously when school starts in August, September, they do have some fall wall instruction, I will say, but it's not nearly as many children as the peak Little League season is. There is some use in the fall, the fall months as well, but like I said, the majority would be in the peak season here in Little League.
So technically, and it's good, I'm not being critical of it, the field is dedicated to the East Little League all year long there?
They have, I think it's right to say they have a prominent use of it. Yes, sir.
So there was a group, let's just say Church A, that wanted to have a softball game or whatever, after everything's over with, later part of the year, as well as, we need to keep in mind, that when baseball season is pretty well over with, it's time for everybody to go back to school.
Right.
So the chances of someone else using that field is slim to none?
If, we would definitely make it available if they would like to use the field. That's...
Okay, we who?
Bowling Green Parks and Rec. We could make that happen. For instance, if Church A contacted us and was interested in hosting or having a game at Curriacus Park, and they're interested in using those fields, I'm confident we can make that happen.
So I think what he's saying, this field is not exclusive to East Little League?
It's not exclusive to be in their sole use. It is fair to say it has, they are the sole user.
Primary.
Yeah, they are the primary user of the fields, of the concession stand.
Historically primary.
That's right.
Do other Little League teams have primary fields as well?
Petticoe Park has two fields for West Little League that the city actually maintains in similar to Curriacus Park. And just, now we actually have, do some quick math, we have about five baseball fields, predominantly baseball fields. East Little League has practices at the majority of those fields. They don't just practice at East Little League, they actually practice some at Petticoe Park and some at Hobson Grove as well, because their Little League, their Little League has expanded as time has gone, has grown. So they do, they do have some practices outside of Curriacus Park, for that matter, but yes, it is fair to say prominent use is East Little League.
How many, how many teams would we be able to accommodate for use on any of our fields? What happens at Langton Park? In other words, I guess what I'm getting to in trying to find out is, and it's very simple. Do we have any other fields that kids can play on?
Yes, sir.
Are all our fields tied up with some organization?
No, sir. Langton Park is overseen directly by Bowling Green Parks and Rec through the Bowling Green Athletic Association, and we do all the scheduling through our department at Langton Field. We have five fields there. Then we have Petticoe Park that has two fields. Both of those are Little League fields. Once again, similar to East Little League, West Little League controls the scheduling of those two fields. They do all the game scheduling at those two fields and practice scheduling. There are tournaments, outside tournaments if you will, that are, A, would be held at Petticoe Park. Hobson Grove has what we call a lesion field, and primarily like a Bayou sized field, and a, we call a prep field, which is softball and/or could be 13-year-old or maybe even Little League sized field at Hobson Grove. And those fields are probably, I wouldn't say the least used, but we, least used, but we definitely have the ability to probably fit some more times in for other teams or other people interested. Would be, Hobson Grove would be a primary spot we could fit them in at.
So, there are fields available for kids to play on, over and above the two exclusive fields?
Yes, sir. And Curriacus Park, actually the one that we're talking about with the bullpen fencing, we don't have locks on those fields. It's not uncommon for us to have children or tend to be parents out with their child doing some infield practice, if you will, on that field.
Could someone on a particular field, let's say we've got a field at Langton Park, could I come to you and say, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that, and a group of us have the money to do these things? And I realize that this field belongs to the city of Bowling Green. Could I invite other teams from other cities to come in and play on that field?
Yes, sir. We have, we have tournaments often at our fields. They have to go through the insurance process to make sure they're covered, but yes, sir. We have tournaments that we consider as fundraising tournaments for travel teams, if we say, on our fields often. At Langton Park, sometimes at Hobson Grove, Petticoe Park, and possibly even Curriacus. All these fields are available for rental.
And just so I can, but all of our park facilities are open for rental?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. Yes, that's exactly right.
Can I just add a point, maybe? I think there's two values here. One is to provide general recreation, and the other is to have groups, athletic groups within a community, provide meaningful programming on an organized basis for larger groups of kids. So we want to balance both the Little League associations with, as well as those who want to create individualized play. We had the same conflict with soccer all the time.
Yes.
People wanting to come play on Sunday afternoon, and we try to balance that with the groups who want to teach kids how to play soccer and have it in an organized way. So there's always, and you don't want to overbuild fields, but you've got to maintain those. So what Joe's raising is a good question, because it's a constant balancing act, which we do.
And I was thinking of the fact, when you talk about the soccer field, we're talking about several acres out there.
Right.
And what one needs to do is go up in a plane and see all those kids out there on a Saturday morning, all those different colored jerseys.
That's right.
To come to the conclusion that, hey, man, this is a big park.
No doubt about it.
I guess my concern is, is that, going back to question one, when we talk of ball fields, we're talking really of small fields in relationship, in relationship to a soccer field.
Right.
We can put several teams out there on the soccer field at one time.
Right.
I think that's all I've got.
You have a comment or questions? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-153. Municipal Order 2014-153.
Municipal order approving a memorandum of agreement with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for Hennessy Way Project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. Febo.
Uh, just a brief update. As the commission knows, Hennessy Way, uh, project is our number one highway project for this current year. We're partnering, partnering with, uh, Kentucky Highway Department. Uh, they've agreed to provide $280,000, uh, to us. Design for that is about seventy-five percent complete, and it requires us to sign a memorandum of understanding with the state to, in order for us to get to 280. Uh, that sometimes is a process. We want to short-circuit that by getting your approval to allow Bruce to sign any documents as soon as they come our way.
So, I think you got a motion on it.
No, I'm sorry, we all would have one, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Uh, any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2014-154.
Municipal order authorizing a change order to bid number 2014-14 for the City Hall Annex and Neighborhood and Community Services Building Renovation Project from Scott Murphy and Daniel, LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $75,000.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill, Mr. Febo.
Uh, we will be finishing, hopefully, with the first part of our city annex and, uh, Neighborhood and Community Services Project around August 1st. Uh, the senior staffs who has been involved with that, primarily Jeff and Brent, uh, children have done a great job, as well as Scott, Murphy, and Daniels, to keep us within the amount of money that we had projected for the project. We had provided a five percent contingency. We're still under that amount. However, we've run into some, uh, issues that are not, are not unusual for old buildings. For example, uh, mold issues we had to eradicate, as well as some code issues for, uh, electrical. And we still have to do the annex. So we're, we're, we have the money available. We would like to just shift, uh, approximately, uh, 75K into contingency to make sure that we're mathematically balanced for the project. Uh, Jeff or Brent, you want to add anything?
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Uh, now we need to remove ordinance number 2014-12 from the table, so I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. There's no discussion on the table, so please call the roll.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
And now, first reading of ordinance BG 2014-12.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances, ordinance amending Chapters Two Administration and Twenty Seven Property Code of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to adopt recommended changes from the Citizens Committee established to review the city's property code and changes recommended by the Neighborhood and Community Services Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill to consider that, Mr. Febo.
Uh, we're always trying as, as a, as a government to improve our, our code enforcement, uh, abilities, uh, balancing, uh, what is essentially people, individual property rights with their responsibility as community, uh, members of, of the neighborhood. Uh, in doing so, we went out to a neighborhood group and they came back to you and made some recommendations, uh, those recommendations were vetted in a, a, a meeting with you all. Uh, you asked us to go out and, and make a few changes. Uh, I believe we have made those changes, and it might be helpful if Brent, uh, children should come up and address what has occurred since the last meeting and this meeting and what we're doing tonight. Brent?
Mr. Children? Did we say anything to Brent, uh, Mayor?
Well, I noticed that he doesn't have town tonight, like all the other department heads do, except, uh, but...
Our esteemed police chief is not...
I'll have to say you look very nice, though.
Thank you, Commissioner Waltrip. Mr. Febo, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, to give you an overview, we started this process in April of 2013, uh, formed the citizen committee, met all the way through last summer, finished up in the fall, and then started the, uh, legal review process. We presented the changes in February to the Code Enforcement Board, got a, received a recommendation from them, presented them to you all at a work session in April, and then I think we brought it actually to the floor in May or June, I can't remember exactly which one. And at that time, there was a discussion on two issues related in Chapter Two. One of those was the, uh, self-appointed, self-appointed in the board, of the Code Enforcement Board. If the commission did not act on a vacancy within sixty days, then the Code Enforcement Board could then appoint someone. And the other issue was the, uh, hearing officer, uh, which has been allowed, uh, is commonplace in a lot of other, uh, proceedings, but that was point of discussion, so you, you all elected to table it. Uh, you went ahead and moved forward with the other ordinance that affected the chapters... Gene, you want to help me out here?
Sir.
About eight different chapters, uh, related to the whole civil process, civil penalty process. So these are actually changing Chapter Two, which is the Code Enforcement Board Chapter, and Chapter Twenty Seven, which is actually the Property Maintenance and Nuisance Filing Chapters. Uh, so I'll answer any questions that I can, uh, but those were the two of, of why everything was tabled at the last meeting, and then, uh, we're just now bringing it back to you all.
Okay, I'm, I'm, yes, ma'am?
No, go ahead.
Uh, in order to include the, the two changes that we discussed, I think I was kind of the impetus behind that, so I'll make the motion for those. Again, it's, uh, to do things like we've always done them. The, the commission would appoint, uh, or the commission would approve the appointment of the board member rather than after sixty days them appointing himself, appointing one themselves, and, uh, they have never done the single hearing officer and the full board.
Right.
Or quorum of the full board would then hear it. Uh, so I'll, I'll make the motion to amend the original ordinance to include those two changes that we have here.
Second.
And second by Waltrip. Uh, so our discussion now is on those two changes. Are there any comments or questions about that?
And just to clarify one issue, the, um, sixty-day rule's been here for quite a while. It just may not, uh, not became prevalent to this issue about amendment. We've had it for a while. The other issue, though, about the hearing officer, uh, it's kind of different, 'cause we're kind of unique, we're just adding that language in our proposal, and now this amendment will take it out. But that's relatively new statutory, uh, language. Uh, we didn't bring it in a couple of years ago when the state authorized it. We thought we would this time, uh, as we did the changes. It's fine changing it, but that's what we made. This is brand-new language, the other was not. So while we're taking it out, it's, it's basically not really taking it out, it's not putting it in.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
I understand. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to, Brent, I'd like to thank you and the committee members for this. I don't know if the citizens realize, but this is probably the one item, as a commissioner, I get the most calls on, is code enforcement. So I want to thank you for the time. But I also would like to encourage our citizens and our fine community to take pride in their property. Last night, we were on a summer stroll, went up one street, came down another street, side-by-side streets, and you would have thought they were in two different communities. One was well taken care of, you could tell the neighbors took pride in their homes and their street. The other street, few of the homes, you could tell the homeowners took pride in them, the others trash everywhere, things in the yard. So I encourage our citizens, whether they're homeowners or they're renters, to please take pride in their property that they call home, and then in turn, it takes pride in our community.
Right.
Because we have a fine community, and I think we're all proud of it, and we want to keep it that way.
Well said.
Good point.
Any other comments? Okay, if we're going, the vote then will be on, uh, this amendment, so only the amendment. If you'll, please call the roll for that.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
And now, we're back to the ordinance as amended. Is there any further comments or discussion? Please call the roll on the ordinance as amended.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
And the late file item, uh, Municipal Order 2014-155.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the purchase of twelve additional police vehicles under bid number 2014-09 from Sam Swope Auto Group of Louisville, Kentucky, in the total amount of $289,633.80.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Denny, Mr. Febo.
Uh, through Municipal Order 2013-205, you authorized the purchase of twelve chargers, uh, from, uh, Swope in Louisville. The department has met and has asked us that we would consider, under the same contract,